We call the border selectmen meeting of April 7th to order at 7:04 PM. I would just like to do a quick roll call of selectmen that are on the line here. I have Erica Blake, Jennifer Dean Wing, Tom Hall,
Yeah.
Andrew Allward. Andrew, I saw you earlier. Okay. And Kevin will join us
Yep.
Soon, unless he's on already. Kevin, are you on? Okay. And then we have Peter Cruz, our town administrator, and some guests that we will announce as we go along here. Peter, were there any announcements that were passed out later after the packet? Because I don't have any announcements in mind.
No, no announcements. We continue to have town hall is closed to the public and very limited staffing. In fact, we try to keep just one person there at a time so that people aren't interacting.
Good, good idea. Okay. We have meeting minutes here. I have March 16th. Do we have March 2nd? I did not see.
Yes, those haven't come through the, through yet. So we'll have to postpone till the next meeting. I don't know what the story is, but there's some difficulty getting those typed up.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review March 16th meeting minutes? I see Jen shaking her head. I can't see Tom or Andrew.
Tom's shaking his head. Yes.
What about Andrew? I can't see him.
Kevin joined us.
Andrew, what was that?
I reviewed them. Yep.
Okay. And, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I reviewed them.
You have not? I'm sorry. I can't hear you that well. I'm guessing that's Kevin.
I'm here now.
Oh, great. Kevin, did you have a, did you have a chance to review the meeting minutes of March 16th? Okay. So it sounds like everybody has reviewed them? Okay. And would anybody like to make a motion?
Was, was there any changes that should be made?
We usually do that in discussion, right?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2020.
Okay. Would anybody like to second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, you might want to amend the motion or else have a separate motion where they authorize you as the chair to sign the approval minutes rather than trying to get five people to sign them.
Right. Should we do that now or later on where it's on the agenda item for signature?
For signatures, that's fine as well. You can do this motion later.
Okay. So does any discussion, other discussion? Okay.
No.
All in favor?
I have.
Aye.
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 All right. So I have five and zero. Okay. And we'll discuss the signature options later in the meeting. All right. Onto correspondence now. Looks like we have a correspondence or finance committee meeting notes in here. I don't know if we're considering this as part of the correspondence. I think it's more part of the BVT presentation. Is that correct, Peter?
All that you have in the packet are information from BVT.
Okay.
I don't know about finance committee information.
So this must be part of the BVT. So we'll leave that to BVT. Okay. Any other correspondence?
No.
Erica, I just want to let you know that Tom put it up in the chat that his internet is spotty and he's coming in and out. And he's going to continue to do the best he can.
Okay, he can call into the meeting as well. Okay.
Should this persist? I'll do that.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. So no correspondence. I'm just going a little bit slower because I know it's, the internet's not keeping up. I usually go a little bit quicker, but I'm just going to pace it a little bit here. So we have a department here tonight. We have BVT, a budget presentation. We have Dr. Fitzpatrick and our school representative, Jerry Finn, here on the line. So Tim, if you'd like to open up their lines so they can do their presentation for us, that would be good.
I think we're unmuted. Are we, Tim?
We can hear you.
Yeah, you guys are all set.
Okay, we're all set. All right. First of all, if you'd like to put up that first slide, if you would, Tim. And thank you very much for allowing us to come in and speak to you folks tonight. I'm privileged to have Dr. Fitzpatrick here to assist superintendent director of BVT. And what we have is the return on investment for the town of Millville, for the Millville citizens of the dollars that they spend. We like to show how that dollars are spent, the return on investment that the people get, and indeed demonstrate a lot of the particulars of what the students have accomplished because that's really what the mission of the school is. So with that, we had a meeting that is the full school committee meeting on March 5th. At that time, we adopted, the full school committee adopted the budget that we're going to present to you tonight. And it needs to be certified, obviously, by at least nine member towns of the 13. So that then the towns, if it was nine or greater, then the budget would, would pass. So with that as a prelude, I have Dr. Fitzpatrick on here. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to stop us. And we'll go as slow or as fast as you wish, just to be able to keep up the timeframe that you have available. Okay, next, next slide up, please. All right, constant improvement requires a constant managed change. That's a key. Blackstone Valley Tech has had a rising enrollment each year despite the annual decline of the BVT members sending communities. Remember, there's 13 of us, unlike any other New England vocational school of which NESDEC is aware. That's New England School Development Council. That's quite a statement by, by those folks that put us in a, in a rather unique group, if you must, in terms of rising enrollment over time. If you have any questions on any of these slides, stop me. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep moving. We'll go to slide one, Tim, please. Fincom facts. We like to let you know what the student body looks like. In FY '21, the student enrollment was eight students in grade nine, seven, and 10, 11, and 11, and six students in grade 12, for a total of 32 students. Plus, as you all know, we have a practical nursing course up there and it's 10th year. And indeed had one person from Millville that was also in that practical nursing course. So the total, because that does count towards your chapter 70, that total became 33. So it'd be the total official state records as of 10/1/19. That is down six students from the prior year. As I mentioned to you before, that has a tendency to go up and down according to the number of students that are made eligible and allowed and obviously would like to get into BVT. The numbers go up and down in that from year to year. 19 females, 14 males, again showing that there's no favoritism there. They used to be mostly males and now it's a lot of females. And they're in all kinds of different, what were predominantly male type subjects. Any questions on that? So we got a total of 33 students. We're down six versus FY '20. Any questions? Hearing none. Fincom facts, second page. Where we get to, where do we get our people from or the students that we serve? BMR three-year eighth grade enrollment trend. That's where we get it from, is from the eighth grade. In '17 and '18, there was 155 students in eighth grade from BMR that were available. In '18, '19, there was 141, so 155 to 141. And in '19 and '20, we're down to 125. That's, I think we're spoken to in the beginning there about the declining of all schools, not just BMR, but of all schools of the 13 communities we service. So what we did was we had 123 students that we mailed. BMR submitted a mailing list to us. BVT took that mailing list and sent an invitation to all 123 students. We presented with BMR, or to BMR, I should say, on 10/30/19. And then from that, we put together a tour group of schools who would like to tour. At that present time, on 11/15/19, 90 students, or about 73.2% of the entire 123, 90 of them, decided they would like to come over and take a look at the school at least. The actual applications after that really is the next benchmark. The actual application and interviews of those 90 students, 74 of those students to date, or 82% of those 90 students decided that they wanted to move it further into the actual application and/or interview process. Any questions on that? You can see it's a pretty healthy number. Any questions at all? Hearing none. Fincom facts, number three. Now, this is the total Millville cost per student. And this includes full transportation cost, tuition, debt, and OPEB. So this is your, your major cost centers here, as well as with the, with the total in 2020, it was 361,267. You had 39 students at that time. It was $9,263 per student. That's your total cost that includes transportation, tuition, debt, and OPEB. And in 2021, it was 332, 167, 33 students going, 10,065 per student. That ends up being an $802 increase on a per student basis. But because of the less students, six less students, we actually came in this year about $29,100 less than what we had asked the year before. So about $29,100 less in total cost. Any question with that? That includes everything as I mentioned. Any question?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you happen to have, just out of curiosity, the split between the transportation tuition debt and OPEB? I'm just curious.
The split in terms of percent?
Well, what is, out of that, $10,065, how much of that is OPEB? How much is that? Do, I know it's an all-in cost there. I don't know if you guys split it any further than that.
We, I can get you that. I don't, unless Doc's got it handy or could figure it out. I don't have it in front of me handy with that. But we can certainly get you that split out cost if you like.
I'm just, I'm just curious to see what the split is. Yeah.
Now, you'll, you'll have some numbers here that will come up with that. As we move through the presentation, you'll see some of the numbers, especially where the, what is state minimum and things like that that factor into that number. But we can get you that split if you wish.
Thank you.
Okay. So what you ended up with is you actually asked, we're asking for, the ask from the school this year is $29,100 less than it was last year. But that's still up $802 per student. Okay? Any questions on that?
Jerry, just a point of order. It's Jennifer Wing. When we switch over to a slide, the participants are seeing it, but on the live stream, there's about a 20-second delay because I have it running on another thing. So if you have a very short slide, you may just want to maybe give some more information. So the viewer at home has time to catch up to it, that slide. Thank you.
All right. Is everybody good with this slide then, at least on item number three? Okay, let's move on. Item number four, Tim, if you would. This is the state minimum contribution of which I spoke of. In 2020, it was 266,417. You had 39 students going at that time. So it'll be 6832 per student. In 2021, it was 246,437. That's $19,980 less. You have 33 students going. So that's $7,468 per student. This is your state minimum required by state. So when you looked at the $802, which we just talked about in the previous slide, $636 of that $802, or 79.3% of it, is just state minimum. Got nothing to do, nothing to do with BVT ask. It is a state minimum of almost, almost 80% of the total here is, is from the state minimum. Okay, anybody have any questions on that slide? Again, it's a state minimum. We all get it. That's, that's done by a number of different factors as to how it comes out. But this is what the state said we needed to ask you folks to pay. Okay? All right. Let's go on to number five, Tim, if you would. This one we're particularly proud of. It's been about, what, Doc, 15 years, 16 years? That we've upped the contract, contact, I should say, teaching days. We're 193. We remain the longest in the state. We're quite proud of that. And this is something that when we did surveys when Doc first came on board, which was a while ago, the people that we were sending our students to were saying that they needed more time and learning on specifics of the nuances of what was going on in the marketplace at that time. To get that, we kept moving up the teachers' contact teaching days from the state minimum of 180, which is what pretty much most systems work on. We've upped that and have maintained it. So our contract carries 13 additional days in, in terms of the 180 minimum. So 332,167 divided by the 193 contact teaching days by 33 students is $52.15 per day per student. And again, this includes all state mandates, tuition, debt, OPEB, and transportation again. An increase on this was $4.15 per day per student versus last year. Last year it was $48 per day per student. This year it was $52.15. So it's a $4.15 per day per student increase. Okay, on 193, the longest contract. Number six, per pupil assessment cost is the lowest of all the other 12-member communities. Mind yourself, we are a, a community of 13 members. Of those 13 members, the district average with the debt, so everything will be equalized, is $12,677 and 10 cents per student. Millville's assessment is $10,065 per student, or $2,612 and 10 cents less, or 20.6% less than the district average. There's a number of reasons for that, but it has been that way and has been that way probably now for the last 10 years, that we are the lowest in terms of the 12 other member communities that make up the total 13. The district range, what does it range from with all 13 towns? Well, Millville, we told you, was 10,065 to Sutton, which is the highest, and there's reasons for that, I'm sure, 15,523. So you can see it's a pretty good range there. But again, we are the lowest. Number seven, the operating ownership. Obviously, if you have six less students, you have less of an operational cost or expense, I should say, that you're able to put into the total of the, of the operation of the, of the school. So because six students, with six students less, it was last year 3.128%, this year it's 2.657%. That just gives you an idea that, that, that thing will vary according to what the, what the numbers of students are that go to the school. Any question on five, six, and seven? Hearing none. Fincom facts, if you would. We'll go up to eight. This is kind of important here. Enrollment at BVT has increased from 816 students in 2002 to 1,242 students in 1920, an increase of 426 students, or 52.2%. Pretty, pretty spectacular increase that has taken place at the school. Number nine, through February of '28, 2020, and this is something that, Doc, you should take a lot of pride in, especially with the administration and obviously with the staff and the teachers that you have there. We secured 19 grants for a grand total of $2,752,134. Our goal was to try to always come around, if we could, about 10% of our annual operating budget. We would like to try to get that in terms of grants. In this particular one, because they were extremely aggressive due to the fact that we had advanced understanding that the bigger cities were going to get the monies this year. And basically, we got cut off at the knees of only $30 per student per year. So we went aggressively after more grants and came up with $2,752. As comparison to FY '20, year before, the grants totaled $2,051. FY '21 and '22 approved student grants, these are ones we've already been approved on that we're rolling forward for next year, about $700,775 so far. We've got some other ones that are in the, in the loop that we'll, we'll talk about as the, as the year progresses after this messering gets untangled. Also, I, I think it's important to mention, we do a lot of donations and asks of our business partners. We had donations of $32,962 from families, friends, and business community at large. And also, Doc, if you'd like to just mention this on the legislative action, or if you want to hold off to the end, that's up to you. It's a capital bond for new programs and facilities expansions of $4 million. You have any new news on that, Doc?
No, no updates. Still under consideration.
Okay. Again, I guess the point there is we're trying to get the legislature to help us pay for that as opposed to going to the community. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay. Any questions on eight or nine? Hearing none, I'll move on. Fincom facts, number 10. BVT, and this is again something I think that needs to be mentioned so that people understand. BVT self-funded. That's no expense to member towns. The first and second roof repairs, and that was MSBA project at 53%. Those two projects, no expense to member towns, we self-funded it. And it's been approved through the MSBA accelerated roof repair project, MSBA at 55% this time, to commence repairs on the third, hopefully, the final roof project. And the thing that's interesting here is the MSBA executive director, Jack McCarthy, called, quote, "self-funding of a major roof repair, truly rare." How about doing it three times? I also noted BVT has done so on two world-class science labs by the same method. Something to be pretty proud of, the administration and the return on investment. When a dollar's given, we do what we can to try to make and stretch that to the best benefit of the students and for the facility. It's just 53 years old. Let's not forget. One of the things we like to profess up there is BVT results. We teach to learn. One of the favorite sayings we have is, "I like, I hear and I forget. I see and I remember. I do and I understand." And that's what our school is up there, is the kids not only use their minds and have to do all the academics that all the other kids have to do, but they also have an opportunity to use their intellect in, in working with equipment and working with their hands to make sure that they accomplish whatever shot they happen to be in. Any questions on that self-funding fincom fact, number 10? Hearing none, I'll move on. Now my favorite part, student success. The, as you know, the next generation MCAS 2019, we call it the son of MCAS, the achievement results came out. And I'm proud to say that, once again, that in math, we were number one when we compared with all 26 other vocational technical schools. We're number one again. We're number one when compared with the 11-member local district schools as well. In science, we're number one when compared with all other sister vocational schools. And we were number one when compared with all, with the 11-member local district schools as well. Pretty, something to be pretty proud of. ELA, number one when compared with the other sister vocational schools. And Doc, I don't know, you're going to have to explain why we're number three when compared with 11 other member local districts of schools. Yeah.
The other systems have responded to the challenge.
Yeah, very good, very well. But I'm, I'm pretty proud of that. That shows, and I think I've been mentioning this for, ever since I've been there, clearly demonstrates, once again, that vocational students can compete academically, which they're required to do, the same as any other academic school, and intellectually, as well as excel in their desired vocational shots. And we'll show some examples of that in a minute. By the way, this year marks the 17th consecutive year of 100% of students passing MCAS for the year of graduation. That's unrivaled with any other schools. Again, return on investment, dollars spent, dollars, dollars paid out, and look at the results that you're getting. Any question on student success, number one? Hearing none. Page two. Okay. Eight Millville students, eight of them, earned the prestigious BVT superintendent commendation list for academic and related sharp excellence, scoring 88% or better. Now, why is that noteworthy? Well, first of all, I'm pretty proud of the eight students we have from Millville that accomplished that. But also, this is only the second year we raised the threshold to be on a BVT superintendent commendation list from an 80 to an 88%. These eight students met that challenge and hit that hurdle. Let's talk a little bit about more student success. Skills USA Award. BVT students earned 150 medals at the district, state, and national levels. Valley Tech students took home 95 medals at the 2019 District Five Skills USA competition that was held at Bay Path Vocational School, competing against nearly 800 vocational students. BVT students won a total of 31 bronze, 31 silver, and 33 gold medals in that competition. Valley Tech students were awarded 53 medals at the Mass State leadership. First you do the regionals, then you go to the state. And skills conference, there was 25 gold medals awarded, 16 silver, 12 bronze. BVT then sent 30 qualifying students to compete in the Skills USA Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky, against 10,000 competitors, and was awarded a total of two gold medals as best in the country, including Millville's own Samuel Hool. Congratulations, Thomas, with a gold medal best in the country in major appliance technology. The BV team also had 11 top 20 placements, eight student recognitions outside of the top 10, an elected national officer, a Mass Region One elected vice president, and seven members of the team were elected by their peers as national voting delegates. I would say that was a pretty good, pretty good sweep of, of events that we took place between the regional, the state, and also 30 going to the nationals. Student success at its best. More, any questions on that? Move on to the next page if you would, Tim. According to the Massachusetts DESE, this isn't, this isn't us touting our own horn here. This is what the DESE is saying. The four-year graduation rate of the 302 students in the class of 2919 at BVT was 99.3% compared to the state average of 88.1. The dropout rate at BVT was .2 compared to the state average of 5.3. But where do these kids go to after, after graduation? Well, let's take a look at the class and see how that breaks out. Total number of students, 231, or 76, almost 77% of the graduating class went on to four-year college or technical colleges, WPI, whatever. 31 or 10.3% went on to apprenticeship programs. 16 students of 5.3% went right into employment roles. 15 or 5% went into two-year or certified programs. Five went into the military, thank God, and two took a year off and one went to a non-US college, somewhere out of country. I want you to remind yourself here, statewide, 56% of the graduates went on to a four-year college. We had 76.7 at BVT. Any questions on that student success? Again, something to be pretty proud of for your vocational technical school. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll move on. And now the best part, I've saved until this point. Dr. Fitzpatrick, additional comments?
If I may, thank you very much, Jerry. Am I live?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. First of all, I, I trust that the presentation is coming across as the serious responsibility that the school committee and superintendent leadership team take in reporting on your vocational technical school. It's really not intended to be boastful, but we are proud of what's accomplished by our students and with your confidence. The one question I heard from Erica was relative to OPEB. Let me share how we fund OPEB. The school committee negotiated an arrangement through the collective bargaining process some time ago, which called upon those in the collective bargaining coverage, primarily teachers, but not limited teachers, would make a contribution from their paycheck, each, each payroll period, which generates $15,000 per year. We negotiated a relaxed or restructured arrangement with the state that freed up money that the state indicated that they had billed inappropriately to us that allows us to commit $100,000 to commit one-hundred thousand to the OPEB for FY twenty-one. And the budget contains fifteen thousand. So mathematically, I believe that turns out to be eleven dollars and eighty-one cents within the per pupil assessment to respond to. Does that answer your question, Erica?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
The other point I want to make before I address the current slide is that, is I trust everyone who saw the impressive results of Skills USA and the ninety-five recognitions awards, that should be an indication to everyone that we have clearly not, we are focused on our mission to provide trade skills to our students, and they take those trade skills in multiple directions, but they distinguish themselves with the skills in the trades that they learned at Valley Tech in these competitions. On the advanced placement, one of the many options we provide for the students is there's no limit on what they can do, and we want to continue to be challenged by providing them with opportunities. So you can see the advanced placement courses are identified. There is a change in this remote period of time. The advanced placement agencies, the AP College Board, is allowing students to take the next round of exams at home on any, or at least multiple devices, and we are providing our students with information on that as the college board provides that information across the nation. And you can see here that the total number of students who consistently achieve well in this category is some, a hundred-and-twenty-nine, actually. This is another ability of students to earn advanced credits for college, which reduces their tuition exposure. In the area of scholarships, we have the benefit of being advised by five-hundred different business advisors to make certain that our instruction is relevant and on target. As a result of that, these, oftentimes, these businesses will encourage students to further their education, and you can see how critical that would be, especially as we deal, you know, with the current virus, where we need the strongest possible skill sets in multiple medical and other professions. Any case, in the last cycle, the renewable value of the scholarships earned by the Valley Tech class of two thousand and nineteen was over five million dollars. We continue to identify additional scholarships. We have our students who are working remotely to complete applications now, who are in the current graduating group. Breaking things down for Millville for impact, there's almost, there's some forty-four thousand was earned by Millville graduates with a renewable value of a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand and change. Valley Tech leads the area with eighty-one students who earned the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. And once again, Millville's received distinction in the form of Arthur Axon, Margaret Boone, and Samuel Hool. These students will be, will receive free tuition to the state colleges and university of their choice, and that repeats four times, although they need to continue to do well in their studies. That's a summary of those two categories. Are there any questions? Moving on. Well, Valley Tech has responded to the governor's challenges to add both a practical nursing program for displaced workers and an advanced manufacturing. These are two examples of what we've done without interfering with the daytime program or redirecting resources from the daytime program to do that. The nursing program has consistently distinguished itself and has allowed, joyfully celebrated sixteen students in the last series of graduating. We're getting closer to two-hundred graduates in that program, and you can see the need for capable nursing people today in every sector. The nursing program is in its tenth year, and we've graduated nine classes at this point. The advanced manufacturing program was subsidized by the state of Massachusetts and the governor's economic bond. And you can see here, I trust, of those who can see the visual, that in the spring two thousand and nineteen, twenty-one students completed. In the fall of two thousand and nineteen, seventeen students. Once again, the spring of two thousand and twenty, sixteen students currently enrolled, completing responsibilities, although probably not on campus at the moment. And the fall of two thousand and twenty, eleven new students are signed up. We expect a continued interest in this program. Okay.
Is that a one, is that a one-year program, the advanced manufacturing, or?
It's a one, the advanced manufacturing?
Yes.
Yes, that's a one-year, and it's taught by daytime instructors on a controlled basis, so that we don't, you know, exhaust them and their other responsibilities.
Right, okay.
Hearing no questions, we'll move on. One of the many programs that Valley Tech has accessed, we, is the Project Lead the Way. This is an international engineering program that allows us to tap into a number of learning activities that are very valuable, and it's also allowed us to be eligible for a number of grants that were pursued through the program. Traditionally, we don't enter into, let's say, cookie cutter-type programs or programs that are designed outside of us, because we prefer to tail them for our own situation, our own students, and their strengths, and the, obviously, the resources we have at the school. But we're proud to be an affiliate of the Project Lead the Way. And once again, this is a competition and judgments that are made outside of us. So there's no, no credit, no acknowledgement that's earned unless it's recognized by outside agencies. Are there any questions on that? Next item is the Governor's House Two budget. The State House was expected to take up a budget hearing this morning, but they postponed it, not really surprised, because they're continuing to monitor the exact damage and the level of support, backfilling, that will occur through the federal government or even drawing upon the rainy day fund. Any case, as Peter will confirm, we're regularly on different phone conversations, networked with multiple towns, to monitor very closely every development, every opportunity to apply for reimbursement in any new development. But most of us are waiting to hear new announcements on that. Would you agree, Peter?
Yes, I would. You guys do a good job.
Oh, thank you for that, too. We, the debt factor, which was exempted by Millville, is down to the four-and-a-half years that remain, and that is the only debt that the school has. We have not asked the towns to accept any debt. We, in fact, have avoided debt, as Mr. Finn has outlined, with self-funding of roof projects and a number of others. We're quite proud of some of the cost containment measures that we've introduced. They're highlighted in my budget cover letter, which was provided to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and certainly to your town administrator. Like to point out that even in the self-funding of the roof project, we were able to arrange free legal assistance by, John Dean would have loved this. We, I traded a favor with an attorney who was kind enough to do the legal reviews to satisfy the Mass School Building Authority. Therefore, there was no financial impact to the district, and certainly no impact to Millville. Any questions on that? Future plans with Blackstone Valley Tech. We, at the very moment, we hope to continue to earn your confidence and support and to listen from, to any recommendations you might make for us to strengthen what we do. Any growth of the school has to be gradual. We're not in a position to ask for major increases in the budget. The towns would not receive that well. We recognize how challenged they are to address all the concerns. We are glad we're making incremental progress with anything from OPEB to covering all expenses. The annual budget, which is, of course, in our, the audit, rather, that's in our, in our budget, has confirmed that our business is conducted in an appropriate manner. And frankly, the audits, which are also outside reviewers, have been quite complimentary. We timely secure from the Department of Revenue a certified excess and deficiency. And so, once again, we're allowed to monitor things with few surprises. We recognize that the district would like us to continue to expand to the degree we can, and we are looking to consistently make kind of renovations and other modifications using our own personnel in many cases to gradually increase students, usually in kind of a seven to ten to eleven based on a given year. So it's not a massive change, but it's gradual. We're looking to establish satellite opportunities for training with a veterinarian-assisting clinic, and we're also converting on-campus facilities to delve into the biotechnology programs, which the state has provided some money. You can clearly see, advancing into biotechnology couldn't come at a better time, given the challenges we face today. Any questions? Thank you. It's continued to be an honor to serve in my twenty-seventh year as superintendent.
I did have one thing I wanted to mention, Doc, that I thought, I think, Erica, you received the actual booklet. I wanted to just go over one piece of this, which I think is something that is maturous. It's a high-value line items, okay? This is a return and investment proof. We ask our district residents to kindly note, as a regional vocational technical school district, thirteen towns, our budget must cover several high-value line items, often included within the general government portion of a town's annual budget, in addition to the normal expenses of a traditional municipal school district. These are the things that BVT is required to cover. Debt, capital improvements, workers' compensation, pensions, obligations, unemployment, school resource officer, health insurance, life insurance, property insurance, casualty insurance, trash recycling, and snow removal. Federal revenue shortfalls, state revenue shortfalls, central office, legal expense, treasurer audit, and other expenses. So when you compare, it's not really fair to compare a regional school like BVT Technical School relative to another school. I would prefer that each school stand on its own merits. That's all we've ever asked, is to stand on our own merits. But you have to recognize, there's quite a few items here that, in some cases, they're picked up by, for instance, town plowing. That's something that we have to do ourselves, sanding and plowing and all that. It's things that are required within the budget. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood, there are a number of things you can see that make up a difference in the terms of a budget.
Jerry, I'd like to make another comment, or an observation relative to the FY twenty-one budget, as before the Board of Select person. You'll notice, and this is referenced in the cover letter, that when we needed a snowplow truck, rather than included in the budget, we raised the fifty thousand, with the help, in some cases, of our alum to cover that cost. Additionally, the school committee appropriated two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of its reserve fund to reduce assessments. And a general observation, fewer students, which Millville has experienced in this particular cycle, does not necessarily mean a lower budget. If that were true, every school system in the state that had fewer students would have a reduced budget. That's not the case, but through the prudence and the, kind of the challenge, if you will, of the school committee and working in tandem with business partners and others, and the grant's success, we have been able to continue to make moderate requests, and this budget is the three-point-nine percent total increase covering all expenses.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody, anything we can answer? If you have anything, great. If you don't, if you want to send us an email, either Doc or myself, feel free to do so. But we hope that we gave you a clear picture of, for the dollar that you allow us to use, the return in investment to the town and what the kids, what the students are able to perform when given the opportunity intellectually and with their knowledge of their cops, to be able to go and put forward the type of success that they've had. And that's a dedication to the teachers as well, too.
Like to give a shout-out to our students who have also assisted the town in multiple projects.
Well, I can relate to that, because I go to the office that you guys built there, and it's quite an testament to the ability of your students. They had some leadership by Jerry Finn, of course, during that process and others, but it's quite remarkable. If I may, Madam Chair, I'll just say, as to Jerry, I think Jerry should have been in sales. Oh, wait, he was. But that was a great presentation. I think you might have had a little assistance in the slides from Tim, who's quite the one guy, and appreciate him for having done that. I'm still getting over the wow of the private tour that Dr. Fitzpatrick and Jerry gave me of BVT, you know, several months back, but I was totally impressed by that place. And clearly, you can hear from the way they talk, they're generally always looking for creative ways to solve problems, and I think that's reflected in where they're coming to the town tonight. But one question I have, just so I'm clear, are you looking for the board to approve the budget in total? Because I think Jerry mentioned at the beginning, you're looking for nine members to help to approve the budget, which then leads to a certified budget. Is that my understanding?
The nine members would be, what I suggested there was, by the covenant of the, of the agreement with all thirteen towns, as long as nine towns, towns, approve it, then the budget is moved forward to be approved. So it's the nine towns, okay? We would be looking, when the vote comes at the annual town meeting, God knows when it's going to be, what it's going to look like, but at that town meeting, that would count one of the thirteen. We would be able to put Millville, if the people decided that they were going to support this budget, they would indeed vote in favor. If that was the case, that'd be one of the thirteen votes we would like to have, but nine is the minimum that is required.
And there, and so what you're looking for is Millville voters at town meeting approving the BVT portion of their budget, and that satisfies the one of nine by your charter? Is that what I understand correctly?
Yeah, it satisfies one of thirteen.
Yeah.
The nine is the minimum that's required. It's two-thirds, Peter, is two-thirds is required for it to be moved.
I see.
And it'd be what they call certified.
Understood, thank you.
Thanks for the question.
As always, I think you guys come to our meetings very well-prepared. You have lots of information, you're able to answer the questions we have, and if not, you come back. So thank you again for a good presentation and a big shout-out. I know you've been doing a lot in the community to fight the virus, donations to the hospitals and other areas, so just want to say thank you to you and your team, Doc, for everything you're doing for all of our towns as well.
Thank you.
Boy, that's the shortest answer I've ever heard him give. And you thought I was bad, Peter.
Does the board have any other questions, comments for BVT?
And if indeed, in the, going forward, if there is any, don't hesitate to send me an email on it. If I can't answer it, and if I need clarity or help on it, you can assure that I go to Doc and get to the answers that you require.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And, thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Take care. Stay safe.
Good health, everybody.
You, too. Okay. So we'll move on to a new business now. We have Board of Health, Board of Selectmen discussion of the COVID-nineteen policies, protocols, contingencies, and other considerations. I know we have the chairman of the Board of Health online, Dustin, you still with us here?
Yes, I'm here.
I would ask you to kind of give an overview of, I know there's a lot going on. I know this is basically hourly updates from the state. We've been on a lot of calls, lots of information coming through. Is there anything you can share with our residents at this time that would be helpful and related to the virus and?
Well, the board is, we are kept up to date, almost on a daily basis, but Sherry does, has to convey quite a bit of information to me. Because, but she, I do have some points, but I guess my first point really, though, the one, the one case we had in Millville is on the road to recovery and good.
Great.
We do get a conference call each day with the Department of Public Health and with state rep, Mike Soder and Ryan Fatman. Our office is still fully functioning. Sherry's doing it from off-site. It's still going to get worse. It's not, it doesn't even peak yet. Hopefully, we keep the Millville, we keep it down to the one we had.
Yeah.
Surrounding towns are in double digits. I mean, you, the surrounding towns are in double digits.
Right, right. Is there a, a phone number or anything people can reach out to that may have questions? Um, I know that we only had the one case, um, but is there a phone number or um?
They can call two, they can call two-on-one on their phones for um COVID nineteen information.
Mm-hmm.
They can also text, which um eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, and that'll give you up to date um from the governor's office.
Okay.
Alerts right to your, right to your text message.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I get, I'm, I subscribe to that, but anybody can do that. Uh. And it changes, I listen to the president, not that he's the guy to listen to, but I listen to him. I, I, I read, I read during his press conferences.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I just, it's changing all the time. I'm not, I mean, I am, I he, I am not an expert on the subject, so I'm getting it off the the TV and off of um, off of our, off of Sherry.
Yeah, so I guess I can convey a little information. Um, it's a little bit third party, but it's basically from the C D C. Uh, my company has a meeting every day with um certain managers and above, and we're on these calls every day to discuss what the latest and greatest is. And um, you know, obviously social distancing seems to be the biggest um preventer of this uh virus. So I, I, I think we need to make sure we're uh asking our residents to make sure they're social distancing. I know now that they're asking people to wear masks when they're in public and most importantly, washing your hands and not touching your face. I think everybody's heard this many, many times over the last several weeks. But I just want our residents to also know if they have a vi, if they get the virus and they need help, they should be calling out to the towns, obviously. Um, with regard to privacy laws and HIPAA, we can't reach out to anybody nor do we have their information. But I just want people to know if they're, they need help, they can reach out to the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen um going forward um at those phone numbers or town hall numbers.
Oh, definitely. And wherever the, wherever they were tested, they get in con, the, the Department of Public Health will contact our um our nurse that we have, which I can't think of her name right now. I don't, so, and then she does all the legwork on it.
Right, and she's giving people resources, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I mean, we are pretty much hands off with that. It, it's not in the protocol.
Right.
It just, so I, the first case we had just kind of went backwards a little bit.
Yeah, so well, at least that person's on the road to recovery. That's good to hear.
Yes, their, their household is good, I believe also, which is good.
Good, good to hear. You don't hear very many places that only have one case. Hopefully we set a record with that.
Cheryl Rowinsky is our, is our nurse. I was just getting texted.
Okay.
Um. I'm not much of a public speaker, so.
That's okay. As long as people have a phone numbers to call and to get information, that's all that matters. So anybody else from the board or uh town administrator like to comment here, ask questions? I asked Dustin to make sure he was on our agenda to show up because I didn't know if we'd have any from the public asking questions because I know it's a scary time for most.
Well, just um, to the extent there is another case, I think Dustin touched on it. You know, we're dependent upon the state going through the public health nurse that the Board of Health has engaged is Cheryl Win- Rowinsky. And she's dependent upon the state to let her know of anybody who may have been tested positive. Um, I don't know yet whether the state has uh implemented any additional protocols in terms of um, you know, quarantining folks to the extent we might have additional people testing positive. I don't know whether they're uh following up to check on people, the tracing their contacts prior as well as subsequent to feeling the symptoms and things like that. And I, I would hope that that process um, we never have to deal with it, but to the extent we do, it would be good to know about that upfront. Um, I, I don't know if someone called the Board of Selectmen, what they'd be looking for you fr- from you or in what you would be able to provide them as far as additional information or advice. We're not in the business of dispensing medical advice nor medical services. So I, you, you know, I just want to be cautious about that. Also, we ob- obviously want to be very cautious about confidentiality.
Mm-hmm.
But in that first uh instance, I, I was aware of it, of the person um having tested positive. It must have been nine o'clock in the morning, but it wasn't until probably closer to five o'clock in the afternoon that the, there was official notice to the public health nurse that the Board of Health has hired. So it, there's a lag there and that lag may dictate, y- y- you know, might influence the way the town would respond. For example, our, our public safety personnel may come in contact with someone who is infected and we would want them to be as up to date on knowledge of infection of someone that they may have to deal with before having to deal with them. That's all. So I, those are challenges that we all share, and I am particularly concerned that to the extent one of our public safety personnel and or one of our, you know, employees, town employees um gets in contact with someone who may be uh infected. Um, y- you know, that can cause all sorts of problems that we have yet to deal with in terms of managing what everybody has to do. And so the, the greater uh care and social distancing, as you described and all of that, is very critical for all of our employees, for all of our public safety personnel. And yet, at the same time, we're dependent upon a lot of information from the state for us to be as smart as we possibly. So that's my take.
Yeah, I, I was not happy with that timeframe, but it, I think that's what we're dealing with. I, I, I think it could have been, I think information could have been quicker from that, from them knowing that, you know, that they, it, they had it to us knowing it, it, it was dates. But a lot of that's on the state end.
Right, I think
Sure, they're overwhelmed.
Dustin is, we're dependent upon the state for so much.
Yeah.
It's not you guys, unless you, unless the Board of Health, which in a crisis like this, to the extent things get uglier, the responsibility, authority you have is, is can be quite significant. Uh, not to be used lightly, I guess.
No, I mean, this is kind of, we did, I mean, in two thousand nine, we did the H one N one, and that was a very, that was a big combined effort. But we were va, putting vaccinations out there. This is kind of hands off and it's just relaying information. And I, I guess we're relaying it as soon as we get it. I know Sherry's doing a good job of that. I'm in contact with Sherry every day. But um, like, it's just social distancing. There's a lot of things, she, she did give me a lot of points to, to uh touch on. And um, let me see. We did put in for, the, the Board of Health did put in for some money for aid that we could pass on. I'm not sure what it's going to be used for nursing, extra staff, uh, data ma- management, surveillance, monitoring of travelers. But um, there, there is money out there that we did put in for to um spend if we needed on this COVID nineteen cause. And, but.
What about
That's about it.
What, what about if people think they have symptoms and need to get testing? It's still up to them and their physician to make that determination and then presumably the physician would tell them where to go get tested. Is that?
Yeah, definitely. You're supposed to call your doctor first. Don't go anywhere and, and go from there. As for where the test, I, I'm not sure how, the other day, Milford Hospital stopped their testing. I'm not sure where they're at now, or at least a dr, for regular. They had like a drive-through thing, but I, I think they ran out of tests. So that was last I heard on them. But yes, you can call your doctor. You just don't go to the hospital and coughing. And then he'll tell you how to proceed.
So uh, and I'm just being very blunt, but w- one of the other things I think we need to be proactive about, to the extent there are vaccines or even to the extent there are needs for additional testing. Our past experience with giving out um vaccines for the flu, uh, we wound up on the short end of the stick uh from other communities with whom we share this nurse. So that when that came to give out vaccines at our senior center, she literally came empty-handed and we were, you know, people were lined up with nothing to give them. So I, I'm, I'm just suggesting that that's something, you know, offline perhaps, but we want to be sure that our Millville residents are as well uh a, as high on the priority list of our service provider as any other community. So I'm just being blunt about that.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, definitely. I will um, I will mention that to Sherry a, as well. You can also. And I'm not sure where that ball got dropped. If it was at Worcester, how they divvied that out. I'll have to look into that. But I know when we got the, when we had H one N one, they, we had to store the vaccine. It was a big process. I just, I don't picture this being that. I, I picture them getting their vaccine from when it comes out, you know, from their doctor, but.
Well, everybody's losing sleep over this. So uh, Sherry is, she's doing a great job uh keeping you informed, keeping me informed and everybody else informed. Um, and uh, so, and, and I know you guys, uh, your, your committee worries a lot about it. So I appreciate that you keep worrying and keep up the data. What, what's going on is so much information out there, it's hard to keep track of it all. There's so many calls be sitting in on, and after a while you get a little numb um with them.
Uh, true, you kind of become complacent with it, but we are um, we, we are paying attention and we are getting up to date information, but we're getting the same information that the public can get. It's, you know, so I, for us to put it out there as quickly, there are, there are ma- there are many sources for them to get the up-to-date information. Really, I really, I like that texting one. I do get, I get texted you know, a half a dozen to a dozen times a day on what Governor Baker is doing and changing.
Dustin, the text number you gave, the eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, where does that go to? Is that a state text number? So people would be getting from the state? Is that what that is?
Yes, it's, it's a Massachusetts.
Okay.
It comes from, it's alerts mass from Governor Baker.
Yeah, and I think that number is also on the uh police uh department display outside. Hmm. Well, Dustin, I would say keep cl, keep your ear close on us because we may ask you to come and visit us again, just if we get more questions that we, we can't answer, that may, you may be able to answer, so.
Well, I definitely will try and maybe we could bring Sherry on it too. She has um more of the information at hand.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions for Dustin from the board? Nope. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Everybody have a good evening and stay safe.
Thanks, Dustin. You too.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, onto our next item, election date postponement. Um, obviously, election day was supposed to be yesterday, April sixth. That didn't happen. Um, so we've been talking, we being me, Peter, um, the Blackstone Town Administrator, Chairman of uh Blackstone Board of Selectmen. Um, Diane has been speaking to the Blackstone Town Clerk. Um, anybody else I missed, Peter, that's been kind of trying to get their hands around a date here for us to?
No, that's basically it. Yeah.
Okay, so um, the first date, uh, and I, and I believe Blackstone has already voted on their date, um, was May fourth for elections, which just to be completely blunt, I think is too early.
Um, I agree.
So I think what the, basically the concession we made with them is they wanted May fourth and we said, okay, you can choose that because we think it's going to be postponed anyway. Again, based on, you know, the health crisis we're in. Um, so I, then we proposed June fifteenth uh as the secondary date. And I know, Peter, you were going to speak to Diane to see if there was any issue around us if we voted for it for May fourth and moving it to the fifteenth at some point in time, because I know annual town meetings, there's special rules around that now for moving dates around, but I, I couldn't find or didn't hear of any special rules for election.
Yeah, no, we can postpone it a second time. And really, it requires the uh registrars to do the postponement or selectmen set the date. So the registrars have already on the election and y- it's your job tonight to set the date. And you ha, you basically you're locked in to set the date consistent with what um Blackstone has done. They met last week. Their board did approve them May fourth, even though, yes, uh, I tried to work over both Dan's over there. I know you worked over and Keith uh is trying to um to move on the five-four date, but they were fixed on that. So
Right.
You have that and then you're going to have to, y- you may have to with that secondary date. They did. Uh, Dan did not know about the secondary date day. I know that was a conversation I've had with Dan Keith and you've had with me.
I also had it with him. Um, I know on our district calls, we've been on with Representative um Bateman and and Soder. Um, they also, when Dan had mentioned May fourth, they said that's pretty aggressive and probably wouldn't happen. So I think um we were agreeing to the date, thinking, okay, it's going to be postponed anyway, but we that need to get it on the calendar and sync up with them. So what our, our agreement was, was they, May fourth, we can make the date, and if it doesn't work, we'll go to June fifteenth, which is probably the more feasible date at this time.
Right.
So any other, uh, some input from the board here?
So I know that um the legislation that was filed um brought us to June thirtieth. So in my conversations with Peter uh previously was that I was pretty strong about making it as late as possible so that Diane could still do her work and file all the paperwork. So I am definitely on board with, I was thinking the twenty-second, but if the clerks are on board and they, you know, fifteenth, I think um, you know, that's fine also. Um, especially now that the new legislation about the town budget is even extending us into the next fiscal year, I wouldn't be surprised if um, that the same happens for this. So as long as our town clerk feels that she can do that date, I, you know, as far out as possible um to let this run its course, I'm, I'm in full agreement.
And June fifteenth was the, the earliest we would go if we postponed it was basically what we were saying because we, we really feel like May fourth. And, and remember, this conversation was over a week ago, so things have changed rapidly, so we don't know what the next week or two will bring. Um, so um, we, we were kind of in agreement of, okay, well, we'll agree with you, but we don't think it's going to happen essentially. Um, and the town clerks have already talked about it and agreed as well.
But we do have to have the same date, correct?
Yes. Yeah. So that, that's why we will let them pick the first date and we'll pick the date that'll probably actually happen was kind of our verbal agreement with them. And I think, um, I haven't watched the Blackstone meeting, but uh Dan Keith told me that that was, he was going to basically say that in the Blackstone meeting. I don't, did anybody watch the Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting from last week and know if that's what they said?
I did not.
Okay, I couldn't find it. It, their meetings are very hard to find. Maybe Tim can help me find it.
Yeah, their cable isn't as great as ours.
I know, I know.
They're um, it's on their website. If you go to their town website at the uh, at the bottom somewhere, you can see government um uh videos on demand or s- something like that.
Yeah.
So it's
Yeah, I looked, I
It is on their website.
Yeah, I looked at, like, you know, it's not as good as our guy, so. But I'll, I'll look again, but, but that was the verbiage that uh Dan Keith and I had shared, and I believe Diane shared with their town clerk as well. Um, she basically talked to them first to see what the date was. We just want to make sure our, you know, reg, our, our poll workers are safe. And um, that's our priority and our townspeople. So, and we know, you know, obviously you can use your mail-in voting and things of that nature, but it's our poll workers that we're very concerned for because most of them, let's face it, are in the high-risk category. So. And with that being said, we also checked for people that are in positions that are going to be on, on the um poll or the vote. on the vote, the Tom and Andrew's positions obviously are up, seats are open. They can sit and vote as members, poll members until we have an election. So we've checked on that as well. So Tom, you're stuck for a little bit longer, you guys. Andrew, you were running anyway, so you wanted to be stuck.
It was worth staying to hear my son's name so often tonight.
There you go, see? See, we took care of you. So any other discussion or any other concerns or comments on the dates that we've kind of thrown around here tonight?
Works for me.
No, I'm just glad that all worked out. Blackstone were able to come to that agreement.
Yeah. Tom, we'll pay you extra. We'll give you an extra 20%, okay?
There you go. Excellent.
20% of that stipend.
Yep, there you go. Big spenders here. So, so I would look for a motion from someone to set the date for May 4th.
So moved.
And second?
Nah, if I'm there, I'm second it.
Is that Kevin?
Yes, it's me.
There you go. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Would I get all ayes? And we'll have this, we'll have the election date on the, as, as old business, on the, on the next meeting agenda every time, so we can discuss it to see if there's any changes at that point in time until we set another date if we need to. But I assume we will be setting another date. So, all right, thank you. All right, on to the next item, annual town meeting, the planning. Peter, you shared us some articles, sworn articles. I think they were just from the Capitol Planning Committee. Were there any others that came in?
No, so I sent you also the draft warrant article. So basically, it's the 10 basic warrant articles that you have at every town meeting. Talks about, you know, paying prior bills. It talks about putting money into very stabilization accounts, funding the cable access fund. And, and most importantly, the omnibus budget. And the only other warrant articles requests that I got were from the Capitol Committee, which you, you and I, Erica, are both on. And those are for the five items. There are three public safety items and two highway items. And those can either go as, the Chair of the Capitol Program Committee preferred to have five separate items. Logistically, you could have one article, all Capitol items, and people vote on each of the five items. So that, you know, ultimately is a purview of the board in terms of how you want to have that in the actual warrant. What I shared with you was the warrant that showed the warrant articles, but it included the description that we typically do. And, you know, and it showed how people, that normally vote on that sort of thing. So that was in your packets. And I'd also forwarded those by an email to you as well. So I put those there. So what it is, is a not very extensive town meeting warrant. And so, so the warrant is officially closed at this point by your prior vote. Or warrant articles to add unless you open the warrant up again. So the question then becomes whether to press forward with creating a warrant and posting it. Because that act of posting, the way I read the rules as they are now, and I've been trying to get clarity from Brian Riley, because I'm a little bit, or, you know, I read it differently than some others might. In fact, on this postponement of the election, I, I went at, I, I didn't go at. I had a dispute of interpretation of the law with the Chief Legal Counsel for the Secretary of State. And I still think I was right on it, but that's beside the point. My point on this is if you, if you post a warrant, then the, then the, basically the town meeting has begun. And the postponement of the town meeting is then limited to a 30-day postponement by the moderator. And one question I have is whether the 30-day meter starts when the moderator postpones it, or 30 days from the date that's being postponed. I, I can't read that legally easy. I can't understand the legal reason, so that's one point for Brian. But you, the Board of Selectmen, can sit here tonight for your next meeting, if the warrant isn't posted, to postpone the town meeting, should you choose. You don't necessarily have to take action, but right now it's scheduled for May 11th. You'll have one more meeting before that is currently scheduled, actually two, to make a change, but you, then you're dealing with the 14-day window of
Right.
of posting the warrant. So you're, you're really limited to when you, the Board of Selectmen, can postpone that town meeting, by what I read of the current regulations. So if you, and then if you postpone it to, say, June 29th, or June 15th, or, you know, some date in June, then we go into fiscal '21 with presumably an approved budget, which would be a highly desirable outcome, to have the approved budget for fiscal '21 done by, before the end of this fiscal year. Otherwise, it's unclear to me what happens next. But what you do is absent an approved budget after the fiscal year has commenced, you're then dealing with the prior years, 1/12 of the prior year's budget, and some dealing with free cash that's available. They let the free cash go longer, use that too. That's, that gets complicated. So hopefully the world will let you have the town meeting as scheduled or sometime as postponed, but before the end of June.
Right. My personal opinion here, and everybody can chime in and give their opinion as well. I think having a couple hundred people in a room on May 11th is not feasible. And I also don't want to go into the next fiscal year without a budget. So I think somewhere at the end of June might be the best option. It's further out from, you know, from now, and it's not close to, you know, at the, what they're assuming will be the peak of the virus. Yet we won't go into next fiscal year without a budget. That would be ideal. Whether this virus will let us do that or not, we shall see. But I think postponing it would be the best recommendation at this point in time. And I'd like each of my board members to chime in with their recommendations or opinions.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely. Postponement is definitely the best choice.
So I agree that we need to go the, probably the latest date if we're doing, you know, we gotta make sure Diane has enough time on her, her plate in case the election gets moved. But, you know, later in June, we'll have a better handle of where we stand with the virus and social distancing. The state on Friday did give some leeway with new legislation allowing the budgets to go into June. But I am in total agreement, like, we would rather have a certified budget versus, you know, a 1/12 and then hitting the summer months and trying to, you know, form a quorum and do all of this. So I'm definitely on board for the end of June.
Yeah, maybe like June 22nd, the Monday after, if the election got postponed again that way, that might be a good day.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, anytime in that last week of June would probably be our safest bet at this point in time. And who knows at that point in time, what, what, what it will be, what the world will be like, what other changes we may or may not need to make. So Peter, at this point in time, I think, do we have to pick a date tonight? Or can we say we're going to postpone it and we could check with the town moderator and town clerk and all?
Yeah, I don't think you necessarily have to. I think you, you could do that at the next meeting and still, if, if the world changed and you changed your mind and said, go, go forward with May 11th. Doesn't sound like that's anything you're likely to do. So I think you now have the luxury of time to sort of pick the date. I think the 22nd, as Andrew suggested, is probably your better bet than the, say, the 29th, which is the last time you could do it, but also it puts you into that sort of July 4th, you know, vacation timeframe and all that stuff that people may hope, hopefully still desire to.
Right, right. So I think at this point in time, we should say we're going to postpone it. And at the next meeting, we can pick the date after we've checked with all the powers that be that need to be involved with this meeting. I think that might be the best logical solution at this time.
I think that's a good idea and a courtesy to extend to them.
Any other discussion or shall we make a motion?
Just one question. Are you likely to change the fact that the warrant is currently closed? Or, you know, that's something
Yeah.
between now and the next meeting, whether you want to reopen it even for a brief period? And therefore have, you know, try to cover additional warrant articles, but I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that.
I would say we'll put it on the agenda for next time for discussion if we want to open it. Because at that time, we'll have enough time to open and close it and post it. Obviously, we didn't get a lot of input from departments for warrant items. So I, I would say we'll, we'll likely open it for a short period of time, but I don't think it needs to be opened today unless you know something I don't know.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can actually open, we can add an item and we can close within the same meeting if something comes up, an emergency item, right up until the time we sign it.
Right.
Right, right. And so the other thing is, there is in the warrant, just still part of this discussion, is a placeholder for the regional agreement amendment, which may be too early for prime time, but the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent did request that we hold out, hold a placeholder for that still.
Okay.
That's in there.
All right. Any other discussion? Looking for a motion for some, for a postponement of annual town meeting to be discussed at our next meeting to choose a date?
Make a motion to postpone.
Postpone the town meeting.
Andrew, go ahead.
I make a motion to postpone the annual town meeting until our next meeting, to, at which time we'll determine the date of meeting.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any names? Okay, I think it was five and a, okay, five and a. Perfect, thanks. We'll discuss it at next meeting. Peter, will you reach out to our moderator, town clerk, and anyone else that needs to be reached out to?
I sure will, yep.
Thank you. All right, old business, our latest budget status. I know we've had a couple of changes.
That's right. So I sent you just today, the latest model, which is, the last model you had showed a deficit of about $107,000. The current model shows a deficit of $27,000. And I've outlined the changes in the email, but I can tell them to you briefly. There was, the model that was being used had double-counted the, the treatment of the septic betterment loan debt, debt payment. So that, that, that made up 50 grand or so, 52 grand. I got conservative, a little more conservative on allowance for abatements, as well as the revenue that I was reflecting in the model for the ambulance receipts. 50% of those go right to the general fund, basically, come in as revenue. So I just sort of decreased that because the trend of the activity there is a little bit lower. And then I made some modifications, five grand here, a couple of grand there to various budgets, including some fairly substantial modification to what the request by the Highway Surveyor, Brian, had asked. But I certainly went over with him beforehand and he's bought into what we put in for his ask. So that was able to reduce things by about 20 grand in his budget. So when you add them all up, it, it peeled away 80 grand net off of the model. And the only real things that are outstanding are exposures. One is for the Tri Valley and what's the other school there, the Norfolk Aggie? Don't know the student head count quite yet on those two. And there's some indication, one of them might have two extra students and that could be a 40-grand exposure to this model. The other one is what the state's going to do in terms of cherry sheet types of revenues that come to the town. Right now, the states, they still don't, you know, I sat in on a call today and I sat in on one last week and they're not showing their cards yet, but they're clearly concerned about decreasing revenues at the state level. And it's unknown how that may impact what, what the towns may see. So what's reflected there is what we currently know. And lastly, you know, we've tried to be conservative on various fees, excise taxes, things like that. So I think it's a pretty decent model. It shows a good, healthy, you know, increases based on the various, you know, the guidance that was provided that you all bought into and the Finance Committee bought into. We do benefit in this budget by BVT, you know, 26, 27 grand reduction in their budget. And we also benefited by BMR coming in, you know, the Millville assessment coming in lower than was in the guidance. So that's, that's, that's helping us this year as well.
So I have a question, Peter. Looking at the email that you sent us today, what is the BC/BS, the five grand? I just don't like.
Yeah, sorry, that's the health insurance benefits. So it's basically.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, got it.
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay. I was trying, I was like Board of Selectmen, Board of what? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so that I added one full-time family member as a, as a, as a, you know, cushion, basically. You already saw that we had a reserve fund transfer request this year because there was no cushion for additional members. And so that's in there as well as reflects the increases from Maya, who is the carrier, who is the agent on these things for the town.
Okay, I also have two other questions, Peter. So the other one is stipends down by 4,000. Where, what stipends are we looking at?
So there were, there was a MEMA Director stipend that was in the original ask. I got rid of that consistent with guidance. Jerry Finn, I know he keeps asking for a stipend and it was in their ask, but I, you know, I put in, so it's on, the, the column is BOs21 column, which is really reflects my comments. And in the, you know, electronic version, you see yellow highlights of things. And so on the BVT, you know, I, I get the, you know, the justification for it, but to be consistent with guidance and to be consistent with others, I eliminated that.
And I think Jerry, I think BMR puts their stipends within to their budget, so we don't have to say on those.
That's correct, that's right.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the last thing I just wanted to say is that the streetlights down by 5,000. And we were hopeful, or at least I was hopeful, that if we saw that that was over budgeted, that we could probably turn some lights on. But that's not going to be feasible in this.
Well, I, I mean, that's still, yeah, that, and it was a, I'm not smart enough. We don't have enough data yet to be able to say how we're tracking there, but it seems that we're tracking below budget, which, yes, you could argue we could turn some lights on. But to be consistent with the stresses and the community, that seemed like an area that could reflect real activity without incremental activity, I guess. So hence my change there.
Okay. And I, I just looked at the email, so I will go through. I see the Excel sheet at the bottom, so I'll go through that a little more detail. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I like the direction that this is budget is going. Every time I get a new version, it's good. So dollar-wise, it's good.
No, I think people, you know, each department had, took the guidance very seriously. They knew that you had all approved it, that the Finance Committee was behind it. You, you met with the chief, for example, and you asked, somebody asked him what he would really want. And he wants more than he's put in for his budget request, but he's followed the guidance. And, you know, so people are trying to do what the town needs at this stage.
Any other questions, comments on budget?
So besides the things you mentioned that were outstanding, that we're still waiting on, like the, the school and stuff, are there any other items that we're still not certain of? are there any other items that we're still not certain of the numbers for?
No, I think I'm pretty confident what's in there. I actually, you know, in a, a late afternoon thought, which I sent to Aubrey Finance Committee, to the extent there's room here, I would suggest they might even increase their reserve fund by 15 grand, just to be ready for surprises. If you don't need it, it goes back as free cash in a later year. But I think the extent there's room right now to put that in there and still keep the, the total deficit somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 or less, which is kind of the target I've been shooting for, that you make up through free cash. I think the Millville world would be in a decent place budget-wise.
Peter, I think that's a great idea, increase in the reserve fund and kind of being able to handle emergencies with a little more care.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you for taking care of reaching out to boards and committees and working through the guidance with them. It made it for a much smoother budget season thus far, so much appreciation on that, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments on budget at this time from the board? All right, next is public forum. Tim, how are we handling public forum?
So on live stream, I've written, thank you for joining. If there, oops, if there are any questions for the board, please send your name, address, and a question. I'll relay, relay it to you guys, and there's been none.
Okay. Okay. If any, if any come in, let us know. I'm sorry, what was that?
Also give like 30 seconds, because there's like a 30-second minute delay for the live stream.
Okay, so you just sent that out recently in the last minute or so?
I sent that out at, at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
So that way, if people had questions, they could prepare them, but, you know.
Let us, yeah, let us know if anything comes in, because usually when somebody's in a live audience, we usually let them speak at any time after public forum anyway, so.
Tim, do you know how many people are, are viewing at a particular time?
Two.
Okay.
Two people are viewing right now, and I think one of them is me.
And one of them is me. I can send a question in if you'd like.
We're not very popular. Peter, you're not getting the hits you thought you would.
No, I thought we were the best show in town, but I guess
We have a lot of views on YouTube. I have like a nice little congrats email that a lot of people are tuning in on our YouTube channel and stuff, so.
Nice.
Well, you've done, I think Tim's done an outstanding job. This is the third one of these I've been on, you know, between finance and, and capital. And just the capability that Millville has compared to other communities is phenomenal.
And it was kind of a rush, rush, Tim, hurry up and figure this out, we need it. So thank you for getting it done as usual, so.
Problem, so I'm here.
All right, on to selectmen's reports. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
I do not.
I just have one quick thing. The RAC meeting that was scheduled for March 25th was canceled. As of right now, I do not know of any future meetings.
Okay, is that in final draft form, or where, where are you guys at with sharing?
I believe we are in final draft.
Okay. So it's ready for public consumption, is that what you're saying?
I believe so, yeah. I think there might, might have been one or two things, but not much.
All right, just keep us abreast of that, thank you.
Okay.
Tommy, are you still in there?
I am.
Anything from you?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Kevin?
Negative.
Okay, Jen, you already said no. Okay, no, I'm good for tonight. All right. Peter, Town Administrator Report, you got anything for us tonight?
No, nothing really, just continuing to try to keep people safe and emphasizing that. And so that's why we really are, you know, I'm ugly, Peter, we'll come out if somebody, if there are too many people in town hall at a particular point in time, really trying to get to one. We've really scheduled out the hours. Next week, I am actually pushing and for Marcia to do remote more so than actually being there during the hours that she's dedicated so far. And I think she'd be more comfortable and I'd be more comfortable, as would others. So that, that's really the, the key. I did sit, I sit in on a bunch of these darn Zoom phone calls that, you know, they start to, like I say, you get numb from them. But I did sit in on one today with the Metacomet, uh, so, uh, deal that we're working on to do dispatch.
Dispatch.
You know, we would get involved with them and four other existing communities. I've had a couple of calls now, we'll likely see drafts. It sounds like a great deal. It is, as was previously described, financially for the town of Millville, it's going to be, you know, a win-win for us and a win-win for the communities that are already exist. One of the things they'll struggle with is they've got some, what they, what they refer to as E and D. They've got a fair amount of it, what they do with it before the two towns of, of, that we go in. We'll see how that goes. But anyway, it's exciting to, to have that opportunity, and good for the chief to have really gotten that kicked off.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Any items not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours before our meeting that we need to discuss?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. So now we're on to our signatures. We have one set of meetings, we, meeting minutes that we approved for March 16th. Obviously, for all of us to sign them, it's going to be a little bit of a logistics nightmare for a while. So if you guys would like, you can vote to have me sign them on behalf of our vote, or we can hang on to them and sign them at some date in the future.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board allows you, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to sign
I'm in suspense.
Did that go through?
To sign, finish your sentence, to sign, save the rest of that.
To sign any of the minutes or any other papers that the board so votes in favor of during this time of pandemic.
Okay, looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, this, I mean, probably we won't have any, but will this include the, just the minutes for today, or?
Uh, it's just the minutes for today. Anything else, I will, I will discuss it with you before I decide, because it's usual, I usually don't have to sign anything outside of meetings, and if I do, it just calls for the chairman to sign. So if there's anything, I'll just let you know I'm signing them, or we can vote again on it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think, I think Tom's motion covers that, because he said affirmative vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Yep. And I will, like I said, I'll share any time if I have to sign anything on the behalf of the board and ask for a vote if we need a vote for it, the items individually. Any other discussions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep, aye.
Is that an aye, Kevin?
Yes.
All right. And do we get one from Tom? And I will abstain from this one. So it's four and O and an abstention. Okay. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, April 20th.
Point of order.
Yes.
That is a holiday. So it would be, it is, it's Patriot's Day, so we would typically be meeting on Tuesday, the 21st, unless
Does our calendar reflect that, or?
I don't know. I mean, if you want to meet, it's not like I'm going anywhere.
I'll be in my kitchen.
Does anybody want to make it for Tuesday, or is Monday good?
We can make it Tuesday.
Okay, I'm fine with it on Tuesday. You know, I have that day off, I may go relax in my yard that day. So let's change the meeting. So the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, and we will likely be online here. Any discussion, or? Okay. All in favor of changing the meeting, or can somebody make a motion to change it?
Make a motion to change the meeting to Monday, April 20, uh, sorry, to change the meeting to Tuesday, April 21st at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, BS is aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing that, Jennifer. Okay, now we're going to move into executive session, executive session, and we'll return to open session to adjourn the meeting. Before we do that, Tim, you're going to, once we make our motion here to go into executive session, you are going to shut off outside contact and make me the presenter, is that the plan?
Yep, so when you guys adjourn, I'm going to stop the recording and the stream. I'm going to make you the host of this meeting. You see me jump off the meeting, then you guys can continue with executive session.
Okay, sounds good. Okay.
All right, so I make a motion to go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 1 and 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Roll call?
I need a second.
See, I thought I had it that time. Looking for a second?
Second.
Roll. Or any discussion? Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Given is aye.
Aye. Tom, are you there still? He has an empty seat there. Aye, we'll give Tom a few seconds, maybe he's going to get his charger or his phone. He didn't write a message. He has to pick now to leave his seat.
Yep.
Back.
Okay, we're, we're on roll call now, you going to join us in executive session? You better know. Tom?
Can you hear me?
I can see you, now I can hear you. You're the last one to go, you're voting to go into executive session, my roll call? You're the last one, yes, okay, you're a yes, okay. I'm going to go into inspector session. Thank you.